I did.
Welcome to the Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, special city council meeting. Would you all please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Smack.
Here.
Clements.
Here.
Dewater. Morris.
Here.
Weir.
Here.
Um, I'll take a motion to approve the May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight, we have with us Tony Miller from Blackhawk County Landlord Association, here to speak to the council regarding rental ordinance, um, as well, uh, Christie Tipton, um, who's completely in favor of this ordinance and, um, has a lot of feedback as well. I mean, they work together on a lot of projects and have just been telling us how long they've been working with the city of Waterloo, twenty-two years. Kinda scary. So what kind of questions, um, have risen for any of you guys regarding, um, our rental ordinance that we've just really, just have a draft? Um, if anyone, have you seen it, right? Okay. Any comments, any ideas?
Well, initially going through it, um.
I got a copy if anyone needs it.
I definitely think that you guys need to have your fees set. Don't just make it where it's part of.
We can hear you, but the recording that way.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Um, initially going through it, I think that where it says, uh, something about the fees are gonna be determined, I'm hoping that that is just a general thing for now, because they really need to be set so you're not charging one person one, for one thing, a different price than another person, cuz you don't wanna get into that. Um, on page three, um, it is four, one forty-two oh six, subsection four. I believe that should be section one forty-two point one seven instead of one six.
Okay.
The reference. Um, one forty-two oh seven, uh, section eight, where you have for rental property that transfers ownership, it should also be for any type of property manager changes.
Now, what was that?
They necessarily have to pay the fee for that year again, but they need to inform you that there's been a change in property management. Uh, number eleven of that same section, um, you wanna make sure that you clarify what the late fee is, how much it is. And I was curious about one forty-two oh eight, section fourteen, three-year period, how many rentals do you have?
We don't know, no.
Uh, guesstimate?
It's growing, I really don't have any idea.
With registration, it will continue to grow.
Yeah. I don't, I couldn't even, I don't even wanna try and guess cuz I could be way off or.
Just waterworks.
Just.
Waterworks.
Wait, no, we don't keep track.
No, I asked that.
In a way that you can easily call it up.
Is it gonna be one inspector? Okay, that may need to be re- revisited, depending on how many you end up with, to keep on a three-year schedule, cuz you're also gonna have your complaints and your follow-ups. That, it, that's a resource, um, so one of the things that you could check, um, and it's not always accurate, but it's, it's a pretty good indicator, is you check with the, the county to see if there's a homestead. If there's not a homestead, ninety percent chance it's a rental. The biggest thing is, is if there's no homestead and the taxes are mailed to another address.
So can they give us a list? Without homestead?
Yeah, that's how they initially did it.
Okay.
So initially, it's a good start.
Oh, that would be nice, cuz we have a, a resident put together a huge binder of all the properties, but at least we'd have something to refer him to, give us a number to.
Right.
And I don't, I even for her, I don't even think that was what she considered complete. I think that was just kinda her first stab at it. Um, it was a lot of work of even that, so.
Another good idea that it might be a rental property is if the mailing address for the tax information is other than the house.
Yep.
But they don't always have it, they don't always take the homestead exemption.
Right, but, um, because the address is different, that's how they pull homestead, I guess, or, or it's a part of it anyway. That's what the county told us when they did it, when they see that second address, that's a, that's a little bit of a red flag for that.
But they also, cuz, cuz we get reports from the, the, um, the assessor's office where they just pull the data for all the ones that don't have a homestead, and then that way we can get a list of those. One, it was for potential membership, um, the other one was to help identify the rental properties. Um, one forty-two oh eight, uh, number seventeen, where it just says pay an additional fee if for a reinspection. You wanna make sure that you have that clarified with a set fee.
And we, and, uh, Justin and I were actually talking about it this afternoon, we, I think we'll set our fees by, um, resolution instead of ordinance, it's just less time-consuming.
Sure.
To be able to alter, change, or modify in the future.
Perfect.
Yep.
And I wanna congratulate whoever put this together on one forty-two point one, responsibility of occupants. Thank you, whoever did that, because that needed to be in this. Absolutely needed to be in here.
That's the landlord's side of it.
But, but it needs to be in here.
I agree.
You know? It absolutely does.
We're doing this for both sides. I mean, it, it needs to be fair.
Well, and, and the, the bottom line is you want safety, clean, safe, and functional.
Correct.
And, and, you know, we don't want people that are forced into rentals that are substandard because they can't get another one due to their history. You know, I mean, everybody, no matter how much they're paying, deserves to be in a clean, safe, and functional environment. Oh, and then, uh, uh, what was that, one forty-two ten, number eight, we were talking about this earlier, uh, the ten-year sealed batteries for the smoke detectors. The one forty-two point eleven, again, thank you, needed to be in here, and that is about the, uh, complaints that they need to do something prior to contacting the inspector or the city. And show that they did that.
Don't avoid the landlord, like just go and request the city.
Right. Or just because you're being evicted, now you're gonna call the city.
We all know that.
We go through that every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in Waterloo. There, there is a, a section of the, uh, landlord tenant law in five sixty-two A and five sixty-two B that does require a tenant to give us at a minimum a seven-day notice prior to the next rental due date, letting the landlord know that there is a problem, and they're either going to, the landlord doesn't fix it, they terminate their tenancy. They, they can terminate their lease for the landlord failing to do whatever it is that is necessary, not cosmetic. Or they can pay for it out of their rent if it's less than the rent, and they can submit the receipt along with the balance of the rent to pay their rent. The problem is, nobody else seems to follow that. That's not a requirement when it comes to legal aid fighting ya.
Or even Blackhawk County, they don't do it either.
Yeah, no. No, nobody really follows that, and it's unfortunate. I tried to fight, to fight to get that into the city of Waterloo's, at least reference that they have to follow the code that's already in place in the state of Iowa. They wouldn't do it.
But the tenants gotta make sure they follow through that notification.
Yes, absolutely.
Notification, you can't just say, I'm not paying my rent this month, but I got a leak for my toilets backing up or my tub.
And it's the first time that they're notifying the landlord because the landlord's giving them a non-payment order.
It's been going out for quite a while.
Right.
Isn't it maybe a proof of notification then, or?
Yes.
Yes, it's just like, uh, you, uh, the, uh, the tenant being served by the, um, by the landlord, they either have to send it certified and it has to be accepted, not just sending it and it being returned, that's not proof, cuz nobody had, saw it. Or having it personally served on them. I mean, it's the same rules both ways. But again, for some reason, Blackhawk County's not following it. And it's unfortunate, cuz the good landlords that are trying to do the right thing are getting, um, put into a position where they don't, they're not able to defend themselves against this. So, it's good to have it both ways, but again, it's all about clean, safe, and functional.
So your recommendation, Tony, is to have something referencing those two specific state codes?
Wouldn't be a bad idea, because it is a state law, so.
And think about all the couple, once this law goes in place, you're gonna get, and how many times you're sending your inspector out there, because it, it could've been referenced by the landlord. The inspector doesn't need to go until after, in fact.
One of the meetings, and I think Christie, you were in the meeting, where, uh, the city attorney, we had brought up the suggestions, and I had brought up a couple, and that was part of it is to make the tenant responsible to show that. And I said that there are cities in Iowa already that have it in their rental ordinance, that they have to follow that. And I was told, well, get me some references, some, a couple of big cities in Iowa. So I went back to the office, spent about six hours, found them, got all the information, printed it all off, got it ready for our next meeting, and what I was told was, yeah, the mayor and the city council don't even wanna hear it, so don't bother. But I have that information still, if you'd like it.
I guess, and obviously this will be total speculation, so I, I put you on the spot a little bit here, and you can absolutely say, I don't know. What, the little bit I'm hearing and just learning of that now tonight, I, I'm trying to come up with a reason why a city council would be like, no, I don't want it, you, I don't like it. Is it just for the sake of, we're gonna have to change something, we're gonna have to add it, and it's just going through that process, or what?
I was just told flat out that they don't even wanna hear about it.
Okay.
I think it's one more thing on their list of, I can't get done already anyway. Even though it, it would be a good thing, because if the tenant can't prove to the office that they're calling for the complaint, then sorry, the inspector's not coming out, where's your proof? You have to have something, a text message, something, we have all the digital assets right now.
Exactly.
Prove I've contacted my landlord, or you know what, well, I did it by this or that, your landlord's phone number.
And that's what I'm going after, is I would think it would save the city's time wasted, you know, of just sending him out needlessly.
There, there's been no reason as to why.
What it was, okay.
Is the court still accepting text messages? At an argument?
I think that the majority of the text messages are ex, are accepted. One, the tenant has to actually print them out prior to court, and if they're not uploaded to the, uh, EDMS system, they have to have it in triplicate. The big thing is, is there has to be a response.
In a time due.
Right, and there have been a few that have, uh, pro, they provided the court with text messages, no identifiable phone number that it was going to, and no response. And that's like sending a certified letter that somebody doesn't accept, they're not gonna know what's in it. So, we don't even know if that person was truly texting the landlord, and the landlord clearly did not respond. So either landlord never got the messages, or the landlord doesn't text. Which is more likely the case with that landlord.
Using that as an example and adding in a phone call, I've, I've called, I've left voicemails, I've texted, I've emailed, there has been no two-way confirmation. I am, I am the renter, I'm trying to tell you, my landlord, I have a problem, and you, for ease of complication, you've just ignored me. What is for, cuz again, I, I wanna be fair, I, I wanna.
You would be able to pull up from your phone.
Okay.
The call history, in and out, it shows.
Yep.
Screenshot it.
Okay.
It'll, it'll show on there, I was on there for a minute and fifteen seconds, it never got through, well, that means you left a message.
Okay.
If you're on there for four seconds, it went right to voicemail, you hung up.
Yep.
But it will show a history of you calling.
Okay, and that's, I just wanted to make sure from the renter's standpoint.
I've never seen anybody do that, but I would think to a judge that that would be acceptable, because it's showing that you're making that attempt.
And would that be enough, because it wouldn't show the context into which you're?
It would in Blackhawk.
It would, okay.
At least have a good argument. Okay, and that's my concern.
Yeah, it would be a good argument.
And I appreciate you from the landlord's side.
Sure.
We're doing this, at least in my opinion, for both sides.
Right.
Our goal is to make sure that we have a safe community, we have a clean and nice and presentable community.
Correct.
So we wanna make sure that if, if, if a landlord isn't doing their job, they're held accountable.
That's right.
If a renter isn't upholding their part and they're making a pigsty of things, they're held accountable.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure it goes.
Absolutely.
It would be, I don't know, and I kinda skimmed all of that, I'm not sure if it's in there, but it would be really nice that the tenant would get some, you know, when you give them and tell them, hey, do this, you have to do this, I don't know where, how far your warnings go out. Waterloo does the nuisance thing, you know, which, I don't know if they've ever, have they upheld the nuisance thing lately?
Not lately, but when Treoka was there, um, I think in the last year and a half, two years he was there, he probably deemed, well, at least a dozen properties, nuisance properties, because of the tenant's actions.
Um, but the nuisance has to follow the tenant, not the house.
Right.
It stayed on the house, and so the house was marked with nuisance, you can't blame the tenant, and then the house is still a nuisance, I'm like, okay, we gotta switch this, this isn't.
Yeah.
So if the tenant knows a nuisance law ordinance is following them, you know, then guess what? That's on them to get a good landlord, probably not gonna get one, cuz I'm not gonna take, yeah. Because of, you know, if you have six nuisances, I'm sorry, I'm ordering my house, cuz you're a nuisance, big meat. So that would be nice to make sure, because I think tenants then will go, oh, oh, I think I need to behave, or I think I need to keep things clean, or I can't, I can't, these behaviors will not be tolerated, not only with my landlord, but with the city of Waterloo.
Do you guys have software in mind for this?
I think we should be able to use what we have existing.
Does your software allow online registration and renewals?
That might be something we can add.
Also, uh, email notifications of renewals.
We do have email.
And I was questioning, why does this not start January first to December thirty-first? Wouldn't that just be easier for everybody involved, that it's a calendar year? Instead of, I believe, May, March, or May?
I think we were just doing it, yeah, we were just doing it at the time we were actually reviewing it. It was.
Sure.
You know, it's still in draft form.
Right.
You know, but, thank you for pointing it out.
Yeah, it's much better in this.
Yeah, it's just easier, everybody then remembers.
Yeah.
Calendar to year.
Right, and Waterloo does give you, um, Waterloo does give you like a thirty-day grace period to pay too, like, don't they give you like a, a?
They want it due by the end of November, but you have until the end of December to pay it. If it goes after January first, it doubles.
Then you get fined, so it kinda gives you, like, you know it's coming in, in Jan, November, they want you to pay it, but I know I was having till December, so I'm like, okay, I'll get paid before the first of the year, it's just, it, it's kind of a nicer night here. So if you, if you do that, it kinda, because you know the end of the year does get hectic with holidays and everything.
Yeah.
The whole nine yards, so it, it is nice that they do that, 'cause I, I never forget.
The big thing I was asking about the software side of it was, check and see if it could be capable, because I'm working on Waterloo right now, that me, as a tenant, could go on your city website, login in the address, see when the last time it was inspected, and see who's responsible for managing the property.
I mean, that's kinda like, more like our landlord portal, it might be something we can do separately, like outside of that software.
Because that would be a great tool for a tenant. One, to avoid a landlord they've had issues with, they're not wasting application fees. Two, to see if they're a problem with the city. If they are constantly being fined or re-inspected, it's a good tool for the tenants to be able to have that access.
You can, or Iowa courts online, or even Waterloo's website, you can see, you know, like, who's in trouble, you can see all of that, which is really nice, so.
It's a good tool.
It is a very good tool, I use it all the time. Police log, the Iowa courts online, it's, it's nice, and so if you can make that information public about getting in trouble or breaking any kind of other laws, it would be nice. Landlords and tenants could have that, uh, the right to do that.
A lot of tenants are pretty smart, they know that's the part.
Yeah, they do.
True, but you get a lot of people that could, that do move here from other places, and they end up with the bad landlords. And then the bad situation causes them to have a record with landlords.
Well, it's kinda reversed too, because you got people coming in from different cities that come out here.
That just trash. Absolutely. Just remember, Cedar Valley Process does background checks.
Good pitch.
I have a question on one of the items, one forty-two point one five, drug houses. When I read, I've never had a tenant that bad, I've always had pretty good ones. But does this mean that a, a landlord could be faced with like, totally gutting a house?
Absolutely, if you have methamphetamines being produced inside the house, every point of contact in that house is contaminated, and that contamination can be transferred to a person.
Right, chief?
Wow.
Even through all of our protective gear.
Yep.
They're firefighter killers.
Yeah, it's not a good thing.
When those houses burn, it's a bad day.
Wow.
I'm glad I'd been fortunate then.
We just want all of that out.
And another thing, I don't think it's covered on your insurance.
No.
If they were to burn it down, there's no coverage.
Yeah, and illegal or illicit activity.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sure there's probably a safety clause in there.
Yeah.
It happens in every city, I mean, every city does.
Yeah.
There's, you, you could have the nicest neighbor in the world with the nicest house in the world.
Doing the worst thing.
They'd be down in their basement doing all kinds of stuff, and you would never think about it until you see the raid that night or the next.
Or it blows up.
It'll be blows up, yeah.
We've had interesting fires here next to people on the fire department, so you would think, you know, wow, they're acting really strange, nope. Wow, they ran out of their house on fire, okay, there's a problem here.
Some neighbors never even see your neighbor, I mean, I don't, I've lived in my house, I don't know who my neighbors are, I mean, I'm never home. They come and go, you don't really pay attention, to be honest. It ain't like the old days, when you come out, soon you move in, they come knocking on your door.
With cookies.
Shaking your hand.
Or cookies or something, yeah.
They're usually trying to avoid you.
I don't know, our neighborhood might be an exception. There's a beverage fridge open in every house, so.
So if, if you're a landlord and you have a, a tenant that discovered that they, you know, been manufacturing meth in, in your house, and they move out, what do you have to do as a owner? To make it, you know, livable for the.
Safe and habitable.
First, if it wasn't that occupant, I'd get the place tested. Get a professional company in to test, do a contact test to see if it truly is. Uh, cuz I, I personally think that if, if you walk into a house that's vacant and, and walk through it like you wanna rent it, if you don't smell something that is very overpowering in the first place, I mean, you would smell it, if they're manufacturing, you would smell it.
Yep. Tony, what, you know, especially from the landlord's side, what, what is it, and again, very much just a first draft, we were, we're not trying to be overbearing, but we gotta put teeth in something, because we're, we're seeing the problem. Our inspectors come to us and say, I, I'm, I'm, my hands are tied, I can't go any further.
Right.
We need to do something, so we're gonna do something. I wanna make sure it's not too overbearing either direction, and it's not anything the money's looking to make, the city is looking to make money with.
Right.
You know, I wanna be fair, I wanna be, but I wanna hold people accountable.
Sure.
Is it missing anything? Is it, is it something, you know, I, I appreciate the items you've already kinda gave us a feedback on, the state policies are good ones to consider.
The one thing that I did not see in it was, um, the specific wording saying that if it is not rent or registered, you cannot collect rent. I didn't see it, maybe I overlooked it, but it's, it's, in the city of Waterloo, let me you, let me tell you, legal aid uses it all the time, because landlords are not registering, so cases are dismissed.
So then, yeah.
But it's a way to make the landlord responsible.
Yeah.
Two years ago, the, um, inspectors were handing out, and I'm not joking, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars in fines for them not registering them after their third notification. So they started fine them, five hundred bucks a, a unit.
I was gonna say, can we fine them?
But.
Wow.
You put it on their, you put it on their, their taxes.
Levy against it, sure.
They're gonna register them eventually, but they're also gonna lose in court every time.
And, Tony, touch again about like, what the tenant's responsible for, you know, how, like, what comes out on us? And what goes to the tenant, and what should go to the tenant, and what should go to the landlord?
As I tell every landlord, and I know Christie does it, you take pictures before they move in. So you can prove the condition of the property before they took possession. Now, I recommend a landlord should walk through at least every six months, and three months prior to the termination, to the end of the lease. That, and, and, I think landlords approach it incorrectly, because they're coming across as, I wanna see the inside of my place. No, you need to go there with a list of all the rooms, and you say, I just wanna make sure everything's working okay, I just need to do an inspection. While we're walking around the place and taking pictures, let me know if there's any problems, I wanna get them fixed. If you approached it that way, you're not gonna have the problems you have.
Right.
And you'll be able to see what's going on without being too intrusive. So the landlords need to, to do a better approach when they're doing their inspections, definitely.
So some of the fines that our tenants get will come back on us, like Waterloo.
Yeah.
If they're not taking care of, I get that list every day from Maria, so, and when I call her, she knows exactly, and I tell her, and I can send her pictures after our thing is done, like, I, we had a gutter fall. I sent her a picture, she's like, you're good.
One of the.
But the thing is, is if not, sometimes those tenants that don't remove their snow or don't mow their yard, they, they, city will send them out, well, I'm after my people, so I get it done, but if I don't.
Ultimately, the.
Ultimately, that will come to me.
And it gets put on property taxes.
And I feel like that should never go to the landlord, because you don't have control, and there's sometimes, people own hundreds of houses, so, you know, like, the people want to lose some of them, they couldn't drive around three hundred properties, you know what I mean, they just, it's physically not possible for some of the landlords to do that. Me on the other hand, only have a handful, so it's not bad, but again, you know, that tenant should be responsible for that, and then of course, when the, you know, like, obviously the landlord needs to get on it, but it should never be that landlord's problem, because you can't control people, is what I'm saying. Then if they get it, then fine, get rid of them, whatever you gotta do, but for it to go on a tax bill and get us taxed with all of that, that's the stuff that I don't like.
Part, part of the concessions that we had with the city of Waterloo when the, when they were initially talking about doing the rental registration, and one of the things that they had promised us was part of that, we had talked about that, and part of the registration at, for the first five or six years, was we gave them tenant names and phone numbers. They never did anything with it. Nothing. And the whole idea was, is to hold the tenant responsible. And they never did anything with the information, they just threw it in a box.
And now it's not even on the application.
Nope, not even on the application, no.
Sure we'd be correct either, because tenants move out so quick.
True, but if it was online, it'd be very easy for a landlord to update the, the tenancies.
Yeah.
Now, Waterloo charges you every time you do that now, you know that?
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so they actually charge you extra to update it online, so you know what I do? I write it all out, and I give my check, and I go right into the city and pay it. I won't even do it online anymore, because they get enough of my money.
Wow.
So, I'm not gonna give them any more, a dollar and eighty-seven cents, I think, for property, for something like that, I don't know.
And where.
That I did not know.
Yeah, something, something extra, and I'm like, you know what, and it's not a whole bunch of money, but.
Yeah. We'd be in the same case, cuz we can't pay it, we can't pay it.
I need you to do.
Yeah.
I'm not getting what I thought I was gonna get with this, not even getting my property.
And you're the one doing all the work, but yet paying the two dollars and eighty-seven cents to enter it.
Well, and, and part of that might be to offset the cost of that platform. So I, I love the online platform.
Waterloo, uh, landlords, property owners, have more than ten times paid for whatever software they had, just had, or just bought, or will buy.
So, and that's, as we're looking at a program, my mindset, and I, I truly am just speaking from, for my one of five, is to try to keep the costs, the, the registration fees, anything.
Sure.
As reasonable as possible to cover costs.
Sure.
Again, I'm not looking, well, if we introduce an online platform, I, I now have more costs to cover. True, for the convenience, so I wanna make sure that just, in a common sense, we cover that.
You gotta find out how many rentals you have.
Yep.
To know how many inspectors you're gonna need. That's your biggest thing, that's where your, your cost starts. Then, yeah, you have to figure in the software and.
Yep, and that maybe something can be added too, I just, but, but that's what popped in my head is, yeah, it'd be great.
But the software would also eliminate a position of somebody in here having to do data entry, to get all that information in there. So, yeah. So, yeah.
I think I wanted to comment, would you guys be willing to, um, help or I would be willing to volunteer to facilitate, um, landlords, like, class? Like, once everything's in place, like for landlords, like new lands are, not the ones that have been doing it forever, but like the new ones that come in as like a new property, you know, there's a new property, but it's a brand new landlord. They may not know or whatever the case. With all the ordinance or what you should be doing, what you shouldn't be doing.
I'd say we recommend that to join the Black Hawk.
You know, I've been proposing that to the city for eight years now. That, that, that you have to have a class every two years, four hours. So you, you're doing the right thing before you can get your license. And that hasn't gone yet.
Yeah, and if the city proposes that or, you know, like, we can facilitate it, you just have to implement it so that, and maybe our organization could be the leaders of that. So that way you can say, hey, if you're gonna be registered, you are required to take this class. And we can go over the rules, the regulations, the dues, the bills, the everything. That way then there's no, you know what I mean?
They can't say they didn't know.
Yeah.
And that's, I don't know if it's anything I would be behind right away saying mandate it.
Right.
But could we absolutely put a little piece of paper in with our ordinances and things and say, hey, if you need a landlord and somebody on your side to know how to do the landlord stuff, here it is.
Yep.
You know, we're not gonna force you to go do it. That way for those that might want to research and do it on their own, great, you've leveraged them. But if those out there, they're like, oh, that's a resource I would like to belong to.
Start, I like that.
And just, you know, at least give them an option.
Sure.
Once it's under control, maybe a few years as we're, you're caught up and everything is good, maybe that's something you could.
I guess it would really depend on how things go. You know, if you see that there's still a problem after a couple of years with landlords' responsibilities and them taking responsibility for the property, that might be something.
Yeah, n- nothing is mandated, nothing's, you know, like, there should be something behind it. If you're gonna have, if you're gonna have to apply for a license and you gotta be licensed in Waterloo, then there should be some kind of education behind it. There should be, you should be talking to your city going, duh, 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 and here's your license. Oh, here's your license. You don't know what you're doing or you don't care.
Here's another good one. They issue a license according to the ordinance. No, they don't. They never have. You don't get anything showing that you are licensed as a property manager to rent that property.
A receipt for the check.
Nothing. Checks aren't even cash for six to eight months.
That's true.
So, I would just, you know, I, us being a smaller town, that would be really nice to implement something along those lines. If it's, if it's feasible, because obviously we don't know if we have one thousand rentals or if we have four.
What I like.
We don't know, right?
What I like that Cedar Falls does is they do give you a paper printout just on regular copy paper. It's just this big, half a sheet, maybe a little smaller, that says you're registered, this is the date you paid, you're registered through this. And they require it to be just inside the front or main door of the unit. So when the inspector comes in, they turn and look and there's the certificate.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I see that on the multiple units in Cedar Falls.
Every unit in Cedar Falls has to have it, every rental. Yep.
I've been into multiples when I first walked in.
And there also has to be a fire extinguisher within so many feet of that.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I see that a lot.
I mean, you're giving them a half a piece of paper. Yeah, maybe they gotta go buy a frame at Dollar General, but. It's a, I, I think it's a great idea because it saves your inspectors from having to figure out if it's even registered. If they go in on a complaint, if they just turn and look and there it is, it's registered.
It's a little harder on the private dwellings because you're always gonna have people decorating their houses and it's gonna be hard for them to do that. But, um, the multiples, I always see it in a common area. When I go in a common area.
Yeah, it's required.
It's something we can look into, but I just, I just, I can imagine what my tenants would do. I mean, you know. They may be lost five minutes and then it's gone. Yeah, they take all the damage. Well, the one thing good about the ten years are sealed batteries. They can't take them out. That's the best thing about that. Otherwise they take the batteries out of everything.
Yep.
We even have hard wires. They unhook, they take the batteries. And you walk in, there's a big stack of all your.
Yep.
Every one of them. It, it chirps, so they all chirp. Well, that's the idea. They're all supposed to chirp, yeah.
Yep.
You know, so you don't die.
They, they need something. They would like you to do something and it wasn't takeable now.
Yeah, sure. It is.
They can't play with them. They can't do nothing.
Right.
I can't say that because they'll yank them off. It beeped. It shouldn't have beeped.
Again, if you take pictures, then you have proof they were there.
Oh, yeah. But they always leave the mounting bracket.
Yep, they do.
They never take the mounting bracket down. The mounting bracket is always hanging there. It's the smoke detector.
Yep.
It's usually in a kitchen drawer or something or in a closet on top shelf.
Yeah.
I think we have a really good start to a program. Um, it's gonna take time to get the program going. We need to, like the ideas about Black Hawk County, that'd be great to try and get some kind of list together. The idea like we always talked about, I suggested breaking it down by wards. Each ward will do an inspection, that ward this year, then the following year do an inspection until we actually get caught up. But always do it by wards. That way we have a breakdown of the city and how we're gonna do it. Just makes it easier too. And then, you know, honestly, in some wards, you might not have any, you might not have any rentals. But there's, there's rentals in the nicer houses too. I mean, people rent the nicer houses too.
Steve, is it in here that me as a homeowner, if I rent out a bedroom?
That's something that I've heard, did the council just, just, uh, talk about that, not too long, about renting out bedrooms?
It's still a rental then.
Yeah.
There's language in there talking about rooming.
I, I saw that, but I didn't know if that really would, because it's not a rooming house.
No, but it talks about a room that's meant to sleep and live in, something to that effect.
So.
I, I did see that.
And it even talks about rooms, but, but no, um, you don't, you aren't able, able to cook in your rooming unit.
Like a boarding house.
I don't know. I, I, I would think that I would want to clarify the language more towards owner occupied renting out a part of their home.
Correct.
That they live in, something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah.
They'll rent the basement out. They'll have a traveling nurse come by or something, you know, short-term rentals, three months. You know?
And you won't have, find homes that I know, so you're never gonna know.
But you know, as you, as you get into it and you start figuring out what you actually have in the city for rentals, you could probably look at, you know, tightening that up because you may come across quite a few of them actually.
I know there's some Airbnb's in town and I know there's some.
But I mean, some people that can't pay their mortgage. You got some people that are maybe on disability, own the home, but they can't make all the bills, so they rent out a room.
Yeah.
You know, people like that. It's just, again, it's clean, safe and functional is what you're looking for with anybody renting anything.
At one time there was a family who had a split level house and they rented out the lower level. But there was no door defining, you know, between, between the upstairs and down.
Usually not fire rated. You use a little kitchen. I mean, it's just, it's a mess. If they don't do it correctly, it's a mess.
Right.
And that happens with too much. They're, oh, I'm just gonna rent my basement, you know, I'm just gonna let all these people in and out. Nothing's done correctly. Nothing's done to code. There's no fire doors, no firewalls. It's just nothing.
Yep.
That's a mess.
You can't rent out a basement if there's no egress windows.
Technically, there cannot be a sleeping area down there. You can't have a bed. You do have to have an egress window for that.
I see that a lot when I'm doing these sub-pump inspections where there's bedrooms all over the place. In all honesty, I'm not here for that, so I'm not gonna start that. But these last couple of months of when I did all those sub-pump inspections of floor drains, I saw some real bad stuff. So that, that's another thing we, that, that's gonna help with this, with this rental program. That's gonna address some stuff like that too, but, I mean, there's some, there was some really bad stuff that I saw. Nothing that would make me want to inform the health department or anything like that, but still.
Just potentially hazardous.
Yeah.
Conditions.
The beds, the dressers, I mean, usually it's a sheet. It's a sheet hanging across the floor joists. You know, and separated, a bed in there. Oh, my granddaughter just sleeps down there when she visits. Well, it's not safe. No one should be down there. There's no way to get out of here. The fire's upstairs. She's stuck. Then they got these little tiny basement windows, you know, nothing. But we gotta start.
That'd be horrifying.
Right.
What's your, uh, timeframe for you guys?
Well, he said we should start it in January, so it gives us some time to think about it.
Is, is that what you're, I mean, it would be nice to implement it in the fall with the perception of, okay, this is gonna start in January, but like, introduce it in the fall for landlords to, you know, I don't know if you're gonna send out a list or once you get your list, send it to notify the landlord, like, hey, we know you have rental property and.
I think it was brought up by, go ahead. It was also brought up by Councilor Dewater that are we gonna notify the landlords?
I think you should.
Of, you know, before we implement it, do they have time to come in here and talk with council about it?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Kind of figured we would have seen something here.
If, if there's that many, I don't know, but I'm just saying, you know, like Waterloo, there's crap done.
I could potentially give you guys a list of, uh, rentals in Evansdale.
Well, yeah.
We have some, we have a lot of property managers in town.
Trusts.
Yeah, trusts, trusts and other issues too. We have a lot of trust. A few of them I know for sure. I've dealt with a couple of trusts in town.
But that is legal.
Yeah.
It is legal too. A trust is just a way, it's a financial tool.
Yeah, but it's just kind of a mess because you'll never know who's actually living in there. You'll never, it, it's like a legal way. People don't use it for a legal way to get out of rentals, but it's just a way to not know who's living in there. Because it's a trust. So the fam, any member of that family could be in that house and they could be renting out. We wouldn't even know. Because they wouldn't have to register a trust.
Oh, you wouldn't have, even though it's a rental, you wouldn't have to register?
Well, they, they just tell you it's not a rental. They just tell you it's someone in our family staying in this house and it's a family trust. What do you do with that right now with a couple of properties in town that would really with trust?
My home's in a trust.
Yeah.
But it's part of my entire. My, my financial wealth. I mean, that's how the whole thing's handled.
Yeah.
So if anything happens to me, power of attorney and things shift around and I mean, my property and you're not tied up in courts forever.
Right.
Now, you're doing it what I would say correctly, but we have other trusts in town where the trust is in a family trust and this brother lives in this property, this brother lives in this property with all his buddies. And they're over there destroying that house while this brother is like in charge of the trust. So I'm trying to reach out to him and there's nothing that says it's a rental property. So we've had a couple of incidents with trusts that were, can't say they're being ran wrong, but they're being used for the wrong purposes maybe.
Sure.
You're doing it for a smarter way to, for the future for your.
For my protection. It's all for me personally of my property.
Aren't doing it that way.
But theirs is just, okay.
Yeah.
My trust.
They're using it as a cloak of invisibility.
My, uh, my name is still on the deed. Tipton Homes is still on the deed. It's still in Black Hawk County, but my trust always protects everything.
I have mine in LLC, but then I have like my vacation home and stuff. I'm a condo in trust. That's just gonna be family stuff.
Right.
Something we'll never sell.
Right.
But there are people that are losing those trusts wrong and I've seen it leaked out with it on cold enforcement.
And I don't know if there's a law. I wonder if there's a state law. Do you know, Tony, if there's a law that says that whatever, what you can and can't do with a trust, I don't know.
That's something we can, the attorney, when we get involved in that.
Yeah, if you have a, can a trust be used legally as a rental property?
What are the guidelines that they can actually deal with a trust and keep it listed as a trust?
Mine's not listed as trust on Black Hawk County.
The only ones that I've seen is actual rentals are revocable trusts.
Oh, okay.
That usually means the person's dead and, so.
So, but my trust does own them, but it's still unlisted on, right on Black Hawk County Tipton Homes.
It's gonna take time. We're gonna, we're gonna figure it out. We're gonna have to start softly.
Yep.
And move into it slowly. And as we progress, we'll, we're gonna make mistakes. There's gonna be mistakes made by landlords, mistakes made by tenants. We're gonna have some tenants that are gonna be trying to use us as, um.
Scapegoat.
A scapegoat or as the scalpel or police to the landlords. And we just need to make sure that we determine every case on a case-by-case basis. We go in there, listen to a tenant, we can tell whether or not their complaints are something that's actually the landlord's responsibility. When they're calling about stuff that you, I can tell. I mean, anybody who owns properties that's done this kind of work, you can tell what is structural damage and you can tell what's been damaged by a kid or, you know. So, I think it'll work out really well for us. We just gotta make sure that no one has a right to use the city as police against landlords.
And you need to be prepared. Once it goes live and it's out in the public that this is up and running and you have registrations, you will be contacted prior to every Monday, Wednesday and Friday hearing by legal aid, asking if the property is registered.
Oh, yeah. I've seen that. I've seen what you posted and I've seen everything else going on right now. You go in the court thinking you have everything done, you're good to go. It's like, oh, you registered? Oh, I forgot. Well, okay, you're done. Get out.
Yep.
It's important.
But that, but that's also why it's really good to have some type of a reminder sent to everybody. I mean, people get busy. You know?
Yeah, I'm right.
And I just think it's.
Same as Waterloo. We follow Waterloo, Waterloo suit. Everybody's gonna know already because that's the biggest, and Cedar Falls is probably doing the same thing. They're probably running it on the calendar year as well too.
You know, I don't ever hear of them contacting Cedar Falls.
Really?
Not for rental registrations, which is odd.
Commercial inspection's crazy in Cedar Falls. I know that.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot of, well, the thing you run into with Cedar Falls is, is the college and all the college kids.
Right.
And then they get into these properties and as soon as you get over a certain amount of properties, like four, it's considered commercial.
Yep.
So you get into these older homes back in the old days when they used to allow you to split those homes up and have six units in an old Victorian. Well, God, that stuff is a mess now. And if, if they, if a landlord were to own a, a building and have six units in it and it was like from the nineteen twenties, nineteen eighties, and the next thing you know landlord likes, oh, I'm gonna remodel my kitchen, I'm gonna remodel my bathroom. Well, there's a huge red flag because now it's gonna be brought to current code. And in that house, you'll never get it to current code.
Right.
That's why Cedar Falls stopped a lot.
Cause with the multiple people in there, they're requiring sprinkler systems be installed.
That's why Cedar Falls, no more conversion of old homes.
Yep.
I think Waterloo is starting to do that too, aren't they? No more conversions.
I'm pretty sure. I don't think they're allowing it anymore, are they?
I don't think they are.
Because that's a big problem. We don't have any older homes in town that we need to be concerned about, but in those bigger towns, they have those old Victorians where they.
Waterloo, Waterloo has a lot of illegal conversions.
Yes.
They have a lot. If you go on the assessor and you look and you see, or you drive by a place and you see six doors with numbers on them. You go on the assessor, it says two family home, two family loved, you know, it's like, ah.
That's kind of like what we just dealt with, with that townhouse over there on Earl. It's listed as a single family, but they're trying to sell it and rent it as multiple. It's only a single family. There's only one address.
Because they converted.
They converted illegally.
Right, because there's no permits, no inspections.
I think we can all agree something needs to be done.
For sure.
Yeah, I think what we have here is a really good draft, something that we can move forward on. It's always gonna be some bugs that we're gonna have to work out. But we're gonna have to get started. We're gonna have to start moving forward and then address it as we need to. I think if we're gonna start calendar year of January and we do an announcement in fall, which is a good deal, because a lot of people move around, surprisingly, they move around before winter. So it'd be a good deal to get notification out from the landlord. You'll do what we can for tenants, um, and then.
Is there any way on the, any way on the website you could, uh, put like a little quarter or a little link to? Like, if people would, you know, like landlords, they go on the website, say, oh, what's going on new in Cedar Evansdale? I own property there, you know, it just says, hey landlords, if you own a property, click and maybe put some information out there once, you know, things start rolling.
Notification of what we're running on doing.
Yeah, I mean, it might get hits, it may not, but it's another way to let people know in case you can't find them.
I think between that, we leverage the, you know, newsletter that goes out, just, you know, yeah, we try to come be focused, but again, it's like any major change, we want to make sure that we're, we're fair about it. You know, we, we, we. We have a grace period and we try our best to get the word out of, hey, you gotta do this thing.
Out of state landlords and property managers. All the local landlords, we probably won't have any problems at all getting in touch with them. The notifications with the list from Black Hawk County and stuff, that's how we're gonna get our out of state. And then our property managers. Because property managers, I mean, if they're a big company and deal with a lot of stuff, they're not gonna look for these little things. So that's, we have a lot of properties in town that I've dealt with for cold enforcement that are ran by property managers.
Oh, yeah.
TJ probably let you have a list of current addresses or something. I'm sure. I'm sure, I'm sure TJ Coinesville would work with you guys on that.
Yeah.
We just, I just feel like we need to agree to start moving forward. And the idea of, we're not gonna start for January, that's great. That gives us all this time to get stuff put together, get notifications out, to get stuff put together, get notifications out, start dealing with stuff, the idea of maybe getting landlords, I mean, I just kinda think to myself, how many landlords are actually gonna show up? You're gonna have the local people.
Well, I think you'll be surprised, because they're gonna wanna know too more about the program, so if you have city people there, landlords that are, are Black Hawk County, run that, you're gonna have people coming for questions, which is good, because then you can educate them on why we're doing this, what it's gonna look like, calm down the, oh my god, you know, cause that's what you're gonna get.
Oh, yeah.
But then once it's explained, then you're like, oh, okay, this is good for me and them.
Once they realize, then we're working on both sides.
Exactly, well, you have to.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm with Steve.
In the input?
Well, I mean, actually, I thought all my words would be here tonight.
What's that? I did too, but no one showed up.
Not no one, there's, there's a couple present.
I meant, you know, I asked Christie, I have, I personally asked Christie, and then, of course, Chief, I know, he told me he was gonna be coming.
Yeah, we got a couple.
So, no one showed up, how many people did you contact?
We didn't contact anybody.
Okay.
It was through the association.
Cause this was more of a discussion.
Uh, these people were contacted.
The association was. Is that who you're referring to?
But this was just.
I mean, I assumed like Chad Deutsch and a few others.
No, this was just our first step.
So, we've got that ahead of us, I mean, there's no way in hell we're gonna put together some kind of an ordinance without.
Yeah, and that's where, this was more input to what we, at least how I kinda took tonight, was get, get input from both sides. Where does the ordinance sit, what's, what's, what needs tuned, what should be in it, what changes do we need to make? And then when we have a, a, a good draft, and then we kinda start thinking up, cause again, we don't have any potential registration fees, penalty fees, none of that set in this yet, I think once we start getting those ideas and start getting down to a, a final draft, that's where I would say is, okay, now this is what we're really looking at, we've done our homework, and I think Christie, you would even mention, whether it's a town hall or something, you're gonna need to make it open to say, hey, this is something coming, not only is this a time for questions, it's a time for public education, this is a thing, so yes, I believe you're correct, Dick, that this isn't just the end-all.
Yeah, but you know, you, you might argue that, um, you wanna get that input on a draft before we even start any kind of a, a draft.
And that's what, a little bit here tonight as well, to get it from the landlord association. That's what I was taking from tonight is, what's the local group within Black Hawk County, whether you belong to it or not, they kinda deal with all the properties, what do you see in just, just kind of a overall environment to, to being a landlord? So at least a place to start, cause again, I do not have experience in it, so where, where do I start, is, is what we pulled up worth it?
Second.
Or is it just trash? You know, did we completely, are we down the wrong whole avenue here with the, with the first draft?
Well, um, I have some basic experience with inspections and rentals, um.
You're hired.
Yeah, I, okay, I, I agree with you.
But yes, I, the conversation's not done here, and that's very much, I, I'm with Steve, something needs to be done, and I think we need to set a goal so that we don't let ourselves keep slipping on when it needs to be in by. And then, yeah, it's on ourselves to make sure that those we feel need to be involved in the decision, as far as the feedback, that we give them that fair opportunity.
I think once we get a list, we can send out a letter.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And invite them.
Works. Cause yes, I mean, that's, again, something needs to be done, we, we've been given the examples of where we can't do what we feel we need to do, but I also wanna make sure it's not big government just coming in, forcing everyone's hand just because I said so. You know, I wanna do it for the right reasons, to make sure both sides are accountable and fair, that's my feeling on the whole thing.
Laura, do you wanna come up to the podium, I know that you've been wanting to.
Oh, no.
Speak.
I just wanted to touch on the whole fairness issue, I wanted to make sure that since we're inviting landlords, that we're also looking at equal housing opportunity, we've got the Evansdale Municipal Housing Authority, we've got the civil rights groups, um, Section Eight Women and Children, all of those organizations that are there to kind of stand on behalf of the tenants. Um, if you're talking about inviting landlords, then we need to have somebody represent the tenants as well. And so, I'm not exactly sure what happened tonight, cause I was, it's my busy season, I didn't get here on time, so I didn't, I'll have to review the, the video later. But if we're talking about fairness, we need to keep it fair on both sides. Um, there are various organizations, including the veterans organizations, that are concerned about the quality of housing in general. Myself, being a mother of adult children, um, I know my kids struggle finding affordable housing, and it's really gotten quite out of control. So, we need somebody, I mean, if you're gonna call in the landlord association, you're gonna have special meetings for them, then we need to do the same thing for the tenants.
And I hope too, when you watch the recording, uh, I feel that Tony did a nice job not advocating for, hey, this is what gets landlords out of all these messes. He did bring up several even state statutes that he's, even kinda faulted other communities, saying, why would you not incorporate the state law that actually is on behalf of the renter, to make sure the landlords are held accountable? So I, I, I personally feel that Tony did a nice job really coming in saying.
And I can't speak to that, cause I missed it, so I apologize.
And I'm just saying, I hope when you are able to watch it, then I hope you will see that it certainly was not a one-sided fight tonight. You are also correct, the municipal housing authority are ones that we have considered as well, to make sure we're talking with.
So if we're gonna have any more special, um, meetings that are outside of the normal council time, are you gonna have those organizations come forward and?
Potentially, yes, yep, those have all been talked about.
Okay.
Yep.
As long as we do that, that's cool.
Anyone else would like to address the council at this time regarding the rental housing regulatory program? Any questions from council?
No, this time. I've talked a lot, I'll shut up.
Is there a sample that we can look at of the, or, do you have anything in writing that you're looking at adopting?
Yeah, it was actually on our, what meeting was that?
It's on the website.
March fourteenth. Oh, it's on this one, it's on this meeting.
Under the special meeting.
Yep.
I don't see it.
Yeah, short answer is, Laura, yes, it's, and it's, again, it's a very vague draft, it's a very much started, it'll need tweaked, but yes, we have a starting place.